Well, it's nine AM.
So I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call. Moeller, gray lobe.
Here.
All right.
Here.
T Z.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
All right, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, I, is there anything to add to the agenda? No, okay, then. Sir, is a motion and a second to approve the agenda. If there is no discussion. Can. Vote to approve.
Hi.
All right.
I.
Okay, motion is approved. And is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, second.
Hey, there is a motion and a second to approve the minutes, and these are the minutes from two meetings, just to clarify, June twentieth and June twenty seventh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Are there any visitors to be heard? And it looks like Rod Polly is not here yet.
Rod had a meeting this morning and Larry was unable to make it as well. I think that we only have the one agenda item, which was the request for funding from Burlington Northern. And he said, if you guys are comfortable considering that today, go ahead, otherwise it can wait till the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, for me, the memo was very clear, what they're looking for is a thousand dollars. And that would be our share of repairing the railroad crossing on Saginaw Avenue.
I. I, I read that as a thousand dollars a foot. Did I get that wrong?
No, linear foot, you're right.
Yep, okay. And the one thing we're not sure about then is whether Rod has the money in his budget or not, or whether we need to take it out of the commissioner's line item. I don't know if he mentioned that to you.
He didn't say.
Is this a, a, a timing? Is there a timing issue here, or would we be safe and?
I think we could put it till the next meeting. He said that would be fine, so.
Yeah, so, so let's, let's do that. You know, defer it to, to the next meeting agenda, so we can figure out where that money will come from.
That's gonna be roughly, what, sixty thousand dollars?
Is it?
Yeah.
Sixty-six thousand. We have to pay for everything in the front of it.
All right.
I mean, is it mandatory?
You know, it's not mandatory, but it's safety. And, you know, they have a regular replacement program for railroad crossings, and it's this one's turn to be replaced. And if, you know, I suppose we could argue with them about whether who should pay, but they're offering to pay fifty percent. And normally, it's the responsibility of a local government to do this. So I, I think we've got a huge liability problem if we don't do it. It seems like penny wise and dollar foolish to put it off.
Seems like a pretty, like a pretty high traffic spot too, heading down to the residential area down by the river down there.
Yep, yep, a lot of traffic. So, okay, so let's put that on the next, the next agenda. All right, so then we're on to. Budget requests. Lane, you are on.
Twenty twenty-four budget. Uh. It'll, it's essentially the same as last year, just looks different. There will be a couple changes. I got. Necessarily put that way. We added a couple more budget line, item lines to mine last year to, because the way it was all set up before everything came out of supplies. So we've done a professional services and then automotive and stuff like that to kind of break it up a little bit better. So. Again, basically, everything's generally the same, it just may look different. Professional services, I did jump up because I'm already way over that. For this year. And there is another ones, one of the insurance ones might be like work comp or something like that, that I'm, I'm in the red for this year. But. I also think like the general fund stuff, I was down, I'm down a hundred dollars this year compared to last year, so. I guess it's all kind of status quo. I have no idea. Kerry hasn't sent me anything for what to put in for health insurance and all that.
Yeah.
I don't know what any of that's gonna be.
Yeah, that just is what it is. There's, you don't have control over it and.
Yep. So I guess I'll answer any questions that you have about it.
So in terms of programming, you're basically doing the same things next year as you're doing this year?
For the most part, yep. Uh, one of the, kind of like what the county, although a very much cheaper form, their software. I've changed companies, which is why the professional services went up because there is a thousand dollar initiation fee that's not gonna be there next year, so. That'll all be kind of a wash once twenty twenty-four hits, so. But. As far as everything else, it's all pretty much right on track, so.
So it's like apples to apples.
Yeah, it will be in twenty, it looks bad this year, but it'll be there next year.
It doesn't look bad this year. It looks, it looks like what you need.
It's, yeah, it's always been one of those things where. I've been in private business long enough that I like thing, my accountants like me because I break things down. To, like, instead of just utilities, I have phone bill, electric, you know, all that, so I know where all the things go, but.
Once we know more about these other. Insurance costs and that sort of stuff, I'll know a lot more.
Yeah.
It looks like everything is kind of in line with.
Yeah, um, yeah, the only thing that may. Uh, it's, I think, I think it was workman's comp this year that. Oh, the other thing was the publishing, that's what it was. I spent ten years, a company host that I had run my personal stuff through, we set up the county. Ten, twelve years ago, and for the last decade, he never charged us anything. And including domain fees, he actually paid for the county's name registration and never charged us.
Should we send him a thank you note?
Um, I've, Matthew Stevens, he's now a lawyer out in Oregon. He was a student at Iowa State when it all started, but. Awesome, treated us great, never had any issues. But he's getting out of the server business because of his law practice out there. And so I switched to Ericsson's and there was like a seven hundred dollar a year thing with them now. And the website's been down three times, so. So that was the publishing that is going to see a dramatic increase because we went from free to whatever it is now.
And publishing, that's a blank line right now.
Yeah. Uh, really?
Yep.
Oh, I put a thousand dollars in, maybe it didn't get.
Okay.
Okay.
Because it used to be like two fifty. Yep.
There's a thousand in the next line and the repairs and maintenance.
Oh, maybe I put in the wrong line when I transferred.
Yep, that, that should be two thousand.
Let me go in and fix that.
And then supplies is fifteen hundred.
Oh, so it's like one line off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay.
Where do we, where do we get back on down there? Or is, is the rest of that?
I have, I put in five thousand for automotive. So I don't know if that's.
Yep.
Would that be?
Oh, I see, down there.
Oh, there it is, okay, yep.
Okay, so, well, I'll just go through that. Insurance is twenty-two fifty.
Yeah.
Professional services, five thousand. Publishing is a thousand. Repair and maintenance is two thousand, which is like tires and stuff, it's not. For the trailers, it's not anything to do with buildings. Supplies is fifteen hundred. Travel is three thousand. Utilities, twenty-five hundred. Other grants, ten thousand, which is the pod stuff generally. Uh, equipment grant, zero. And automotive, five thousand.
So everything, everything shifted down online.
Okay. On your things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, since there's a zero on that last line.
Yeah, exactly.
And then, uh, just so you know, on the, the, that's all the two-two-six stuff. On the one-on-one general fund side of it with the L A P C. As of this morning, we have officially added another drone pilot, so. Some of those salaries will start coming out of there now that we're full staffed on that. Victor Allen from the sheriff's office is gonna be our third pilot.
It's good news.
Yeah.
Here is that one thirty-three, four fifty-eight number, is that good then, other than the?
Yes.
The insurance? Okay.
Yeah, because I just shifted everything.
Yeah.
Down there.
Five K change.
Well, if you don't have any more questions and some come up later, just let me know. You have extras, I'll pick it.
Yeah. Yeah, probably not. Well, thank you, Lane. Drew. Talk about your, your budgets, see what page. They help us to. So your veteran services budget is page thirty. It's maybe when we have. Uh, when we've got final numbers, maybe we can all get hard copies.
Sure.
That, that helps a lot when we're.
Yeah.
And I will have, when I have the final copies for you, when I send you the PDFs, I'll have those hyperlink so you can click on the page number and go right to it.
Oh, yeah.
Just didn't, didn't quite get there yesterday.
Let's see. Still heading toward thirty here. All right.
Yeah, on the veterans' side. Just, there wasn't really much, the, the traveling conference. I expect that actually to be less this year because the conference is up in Sioux Falls, so we don't have to tell or anything. Uh, other than that, veterans is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, so it looks like you did pretty much what you did last year, but. You line items look like, oh, I see, that's just a placeholder. So any. Any changes you want to talk about or?
In veterans, no, I mean, it's, for budget wise, it's same thing.
It's the same thing.
Yeah.
How much of this is reimbursed in grants?
Uh. There's how much from the state?
I want to say there's about forty-one hundred from the state per salaries.
That changed this year.
Yeah, it was thirty-seven fifty.
Yeah.
I think it's about forty-one hundred now.
That's right, we had a discussion on whether that was gonna change your wages.
Yeah, yeah.
And we decided to defer that until now. Or.
I didn't know if we were doing that now or not, yeah.
Probably not.
Okay.
Let's keep it simple for today.
Yeah.
True. Yeah, so veterans are very straightforward, very simple. On the zoning side. I already tell you, publishing is gonna be less than I budgeted, or and is gonna be probably less than. Last couple of years, just because things have slowed down so much.
Yeah, what, what page is zoning?
That's towards the A.
Uh, sixty-four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second to get there. Let's really turn the end.
So the wages, Drew, between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Last year, you only budgeted thirty-one thousand, three eighty-three, this year's forty-six.
I never changed those numbers.
Ah.
I, I do the wages, but I think last year somehow we didn't get the right number in there. I don't remember. I will double check that.
But in the budget, we actually paid him so far thirty-one thousand, three eighty-three, so. So.
No, that's budget, year to date.
Yeah, fifteen, four nineteen. Yeah.
Let me take a look at that.
I'm just wondering if the twenty twenty-three is wrong, because that twenty twenty-two was forty-one.
Yeah.
You, you think the.
Betty Jeffrey's got a question.
Yeah.
Well, I was just wondering if perhaps it combined, I mean, with Drew having different roles, maybe. That ended up being, being both, both roles or two of his roles in one line item here by accident.
That's what it looks like to me.
But it's, it's not.
It's a.
Because if you go back to veterans. That one just went up to three percent.
Yep, I, I was just wondering if just, uh. Uh, what's, what would be the word, uh, looking for typos? If, if this might just be a typo of including, including both what should be on planning and zoning and the veteran.
I think I have a typo on there.
It, twenty twenty-three is must be wrong, because the twenty twenty-four number puts him in line with where he should be when you add veterans.
Right, right.
Yeah, veterans with it.
Yeah, I've got a typo in there.
It just looks bad when you're looking at the percentages on the front page, when people look at, because people are gonna go through that page and go, well, how come he's twenty percent higher than he was last year? And then they're gonna see the, the wages.
Yep, I've got a typo on there.
Yeah.
And this is not the copy by any means, I.
I didn't even really look at that part, so.
I worked on it till about six o'clock last night, and I finally decided I was looking at swimming numbers, so it was about time to quit for the night. Everything was sort of mashing together, so. But yes, the twenty twenty-three, I've got a typo in there for that.
Okay.
That would mess up.
Yep. You can see it did that.
And the only other.
Exactly what that should be here.
Sure, professional services and fees, was there a software change there or something?
A proposal for one. I don't know if anybody's talked about the T-Tech software. Am I the first one to bring that up?
You're first on the list.
Good. I don't know exactly what's, uh, I know the treasurer's office and. Uh, the auditor's office is trying to use, go to that T-Tech software. I talked to the representative about getting my stuff put in there as well. Uh, and they quoted us two grand a year for the software, which is. Nothing.
Two grand a year, go, I mean, forever?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and that's for, for software like that, that's just, then I think they're doing the same deal for the auditors and treasurer's office, maybe. Lanai and registered deeds might be somewhere, I don't know all the details on that, but it's, it's seems like really good software and we're getting it for so cheap.
Is there an installation fee?
Just two thousand a year, yeah. Full database software, uh, gets all, and we'll all be on one, three, three or four offices will all be on same piece software for database management. It gets us away from that old. Axe or crystal reports based, and it's gonna be access based, so if we don't like the software, we can just migrate it over to another server. With no thing, a, software like this will run on the cheap side from fifteen to eighty thousand dollars a license. And we're getting it for free, that's. And it would be nice for long-term document storage and retention. I tried to do the best I can with that, and I've got a good system for it. But it's getting a bit cumbersome with all the information I got, so having a database for that would be. Good for my office and good long-term for the county, I think.
So a good investment.
Yeah.
And what will it store?
Uh, all my planning and zoning files. Uh, because I keep everything filed out and indexed out, and while you have to pull that all over. So we have the record retention, because we just haven't had it for planning and zoning forever. It would be really nice long-term to have that kind of information stored. And that was, that was the only other big increase, I think, in budget was that.
Going back to the salaries, that three should be a four in the twenty twenty-three.
Oh, okay.
Looks like that's where.
Well, cancel the new pickup.
You had, looks like you, in joint jurisdiction, you had a lot more inspections this last year.
Yeah, last year, yeah.
And we get reimbursed for those mainly, don't we?
No, that's money that comes in, that, isn't it money that comes in, then we write a check to the city at the end of the year.
I see.
Those are the inspection fees paid when they get the permit.
I see.
And yeah, I, I expect those to go down significantly too this year.
Any changes in programming or anything you're doing differently or aside from T-Tech?
No, no.
Don't have time for much different. Got some extra loads this year.
I think we're doing more planning, zoning meetings and county commission meetings at this point, yeah, yeah.
Wow.
So.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you, you do welfare services too?
Yeah.
And I noticed there's a big increase in, I think it's indigent care for the poor. It's like.
There shouldn't be.
Went up to like sixty thousand or something.
Inmate prescriptions and things like that, inmate medical costs, and so Drew really doesn't deal with that so much.
Oh, okay.
Just pay the other counties because they're boarding and they're, they're taking care of, you know, a lot of those things, so. Unfortunately, what we're paying for prescriptions and things like that are, are going to the other county's pharmacies right now, so. That'll change and that'll get better, but.
That goes under our welfare.
Right, it goes under that budget, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the inmate, I handle tiny little chunk of the inmate billing, because they do something else in there, and that's way, way down, but it's going somewhere else. I've got it on spreadsheet. But. I, a fraction of what we normally spend, at least out of my office, what, what they see is different, so.
And that's one of those budgets, that's kind of a crap shoot, because you never know from year to year what it's gonna do.
Like those dental bills and some of those where they, they also go on that line?
Yep.
There's been a few of those.
Yeah, big ones.
Diabetes medicines and dental care. I think there've been, there've been a few dental cares, as I recall.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Drew.
Yep.
Carrie, see, you're on page twenty.
I'm in the hot seat. Um, do we want to start with elections or auditors?
Oh, elections is so exciting. That, that's a five hundred thirty-four percent increase.
It's one of those where you'll see it go way up on the even years and way back down on the odd years, so it's gonna look like it's really big. But that's just because it's gonna be an election year. The odd years, we really just have, you know, like maintenance costs for the equipment, we have a contract that we, you know, that we pay and they come out periodically. But that have, that contract happens yearly and. We are gonna have some post-election audit costs starting this next election. The state will be reimbursing, from what I've heard, will be reimbursing the cost of that, so I don't know what that'll be yet, but. Hopefully, that'll be a help there. Otherwise, it, it's just generally the even year costs.
Yeah, it's just right in line with twenty twenty and. Looks good. And then, I think page twenty is the auditor.
The auditor budget's gonna look really, really ugly because of software. So we have been converting over to T-Tech for the tax side. And it's going to be time to start thinking about payable payroll and accounting software. I've gotten some price quotes from Patty. We haven't decided on. What we think is the software yet, still kind of in that review process, and so. What I did there was just kind of took the highest priced one and. Put that into the budget. So that's gonna look really ugly, but hopefully that first year will be the worst of it, and then it'll go down from there, so.
On each of these, uh. It looks like our workman's comp is level. That must reflect the change in the. Multiplier here.
Yes. So we have been doing good. You know, we have, we have a year where we have some injuries or something, it'll, it'll go up the next year, but we've been doing really good there, so.
And the state workman's comp multiplier went down, didn't it?
I think it did.
For this, this coming year, I think it's gone down by a paramount.
Yeah, and you know, you kind of see. Changes and fluctuations with the departments that, that see it the most, like highway and stuff, but yeah, it's been pretty good.
Yeah. And our, our multiplier is the same across the county, it isn't higher, higher in highway, lower in your office, for instance.
Right.
It's across the whole county, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Nothing for publishing.
No, I typically don't have any publishing costs, um, unless we're doing some hiring or things like that where we need to publish for that, but I actually don't have that.
Other, other than our. Publishing or, or commission minutes and that sort of thing, that's.
Yeah, that goes under the commissioner budget, so, yeah.
Yeah, none, the only line other than that that really went up was supplies and materials.
So what I did, um, we had that copier supplies line.
Hmm.
And I'm not sure why that was ever split out, other than maybe at some point in time when there was one copy machine for multiple departments. They might have done that so that they could track and split out, but. I mean, at this point in time, paper is paper, and whether we use it in the copier or somewhere else, and so. Um, I just moved it up to the supplies instead. So then you won't see any of the copiers. Regular and then.
So that's an amalgamation.
That. Uh. Budget line.
Kind of simplify the budgeting, doesn't it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I can see.
See anything else that jumps out at me anyway?
Any other questions?
That's your off the hook for now.
All right.
Thank you. And let's see, the sheriff's line item is page thirty-four, and then the county jail is thirty-five.
Somebody else, I was twenty-four seven and coroner.
Okay, so that would be thirty-six or thirty-seven.
I'm gonna sit down, because I got several pages here. Well, the easy ones talk about, get out of the way first, be the twenty-four seven, that one, if you recall, is a. Matter of just having spending authority for those line items, it's not general fund money, but I try to be accurate. I just kind of basically did that, looking at the, the previous years and, and trying to be in line, so I don't know if you have any questions about that one. We generally pay, uh, wages on there are the twenty-four seven project offsetting. Jailer pay for when jailers actually step away from their duties and cover that, and so that's how that's done, and. And, um, you know, when we get our new facility, we're gonna try to do something like that, but we might end up having. Additional personnel for that because of the proximity and things like that, so we'll, we'll see how that goes, but, um, but that's how we've been doing the last few years, been working real well.
How many people go through that program every year?
I don't have that number in my head, generally. In a year, I, I can't answer that.
Okay. Okay.
It's, it's, um, it's several, several people blow the PBT, uh, every night and every morning, um. We generally have people on scram bracelet and, uh, drug patches about any time. Drug patches are real common, and, um, they don't really make us any money, it's almost a break even deal for us, uh, in the sense it's probably a loss because. The, uh, staff time spent on it, but it's a good thing, trying to keep people clean.
Yep, yep, makes a difference. It, um, helps reduce other line items.
Hopefully, that's the intent, yep.
Yep.
Keep them out of jail. We're not seeing failures like we used to see, used to be pretty common. We're not seeing as many, I don't know. Where we used to, uh, used to be pretty typical, we're not doing PBTs like we used to. Where, you know, they come in and blow it, and every so often people will fail on that, we're not seeing that quite so much, but. Uh, generally on the scram bracelets and the, um, the drug patches, we report the failures rather than just immediately hold them. And, um, and maybe they're not. Working with state attorney's office and court services, whether or not they want to, to, to send them back to us or not, it's not really our call at that point. When they blow the PBT and, and fail, it's immediate, they go right to jail, and so we're not seeing that as much as we used to. But I don't have the numbers, I can sure get that for you though.
No, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm sort of looking for a general sense of, is it like one person a month, or is it, you know, no, it's, it's a regular.
It's well-used.
Really making a difference.
Yeah, uh, if nothing on that, then the corner budget, I didn't bring my notes for that, um, but. I think about the only thing I increased, I think I added for one more autopsy a year to try to make sure I don't. Go over on that, we've been cutting that one real close, I think we generally, uh, have about four or five autopsies a year. And that, that's our big line under corner, there's no wages, salaries or anything like that on that, so the big line's just the autopsies. Um, one thing we're seeing more of is, uh, transport costs, uh, when the funeral homes. Um, transport, often when our, we have a, a local person's deceased and a local funeral home. Um, takes the funeral, if there's transport cost for picking up the body, even if it's a matter of taking up for autopsy, they generally just absorb that themselves, but. It seems like in this past year, so many of these deaths have been people from somewhere else, and we're working with family members from somewhere else, and we just. It's that, in that case, hire one of our local, uh, funeral directors to transport, uh, for the, either for the, uh, autopsy or just to, uh, storage in, uh, in Harrisburg. Where they, they can store the body until the family works that out, so. Uh, we're seeing that go up a little bit, because that costs about four to five hundred dollars each time.
And we're paying them?
Yep.
Is that passed on to the family then, when they take possession?
Not if, if we request the autopsy, then we, we generally pay for that.
But if we have to pay for the transport?
Transport, I don't know.
But it's transported to our facility.
No, to Harrisburg, the whole family can pick it up, so that's your family's bill.
I don't know.
Yeah, if we, if, if we require the autopsy, the family doesn't have a choice.
I think we say one we don't, sometimes we don't, and we just don't know where, where to keep the body. And, um, so sometimes they've gone up there, I can look, it's not real common, um. The last one I recall where it really turned into an issue, there was an autopsy that we ordered, because it was a, a gunshot suicide. And, um, that one got up there, and, uh, but. Uh, I just couldn't get the family to come get the guy, this is one of those situations where nobody in the family would claim the body, because nobody wanted to pay the bill. And so the body just. Spent their ti- their time in, in Harrisburg, so. And those in some cases, that's ends up being the county's expense, because I don't know who to pass it on to.
But if they won't come get it, shouldn't we just quick turn that over to the funeral home to get them a county burial? Instead of paying rent? To store them there?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I mean, really, if.
That would, it was.
If they won't come get it, we're gonna eat up the, the nineteen hundred dollars anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that, in the end, that's kind of what we ended up doing, it was, it was a lot of phone calls, emails, and just trying to get somebody to step up. The family just kept passing around like a hot potato. And so, anyway.
I'm sure that took at least a few weeks. And what kind of a business in Harrisburg stores bodies then?
Dakota cremation, Dakota bombing there, well-known on east, in eastern South Dakota.
Yeah.
They cremate, um, a lot of bodies in eastern South Dakota, and they store, and. They're very popular in the sense of the funeral homes using them.
Yeah. Is that that one that's real close to the interstate then?
You're thinking of the, uh, pet cremation place? No, that's not the same thing.
No, no.
But anyway, yeah, we worked on each of these, just try to mitigate that as much as we can. You know, I don't pass on to the counties, I don't think, or the families when we require an autopsy, when they request, when that's costs is on them, but when the county requires it for our purposes to meet statute. I don't think that's a family's obligation then. Some of these storage ones, I can look into the case-by-case ones, I'll let them get back to you on that, but. On whether or not we pass those on, off top my head, I can't think of any that we did. Funeral homes generally, if they have the funeral, they pass that along. Even if there's an autopsy, they tend to either pass along or absorb it themselves.
Yeah, and then there's always a question for an adult, I mean, who's, who's the responsible party, who should pay? I mean, we, that's, that, that can be difficult to, uh, to identify. I mean, is it the next of kin, is it the parents, is it the, uh, the kids, I, I, you know, that would be really, that would be a difficult.
Yeah, some of it's just, it, it, it's a real difficult situation, like in the one where the families don't want it, uh, well, they don't want the expense, but. We need to protect the county from any sort of liability, if we go and cremate a body and then have somebody come back and say that we violated their religious preferences and. You just, you just, you don't want to jump in too fast, and you want to make sure we're cautious about that. And, uh, that's what was the case in that one. But in each case, the, there was always somebody that said they were gonna do it, and people didn't follow through with what they said they were gonna do, and that one there, it was, that was the case, it's just. Uh, and then we find out another week later when, that the body didn't get picked up, and then another week had gone by.
Yeah.
Any thoughts, other thoughts on corner? Not, well, I'll go to the sheriff's office, um, budget. That one I, I actually ran to, uh, uh, Carrie had requested to, based on a potential different colas, so. I have some salary information, but I don't have insurance information. Uh, Carrie has to do that, and, you know, I just don't know the number on that, so I'll see, see two different, uh, amounts on there for, uh, based on the potential cola. For the, um, for the staff. Um, I'm gonna go through some of these other line items. One of the things I did under salaries, though, you see a, a significant increase, because I, I actually have a request in for under a three percent cola, twenty-four thousand dollars. Under five point eight, a, a twenty-five thousand dollar increase, uh, just essentially requesting back, um, a position, I gave up a few years ago. I had a, uh, one and a half positions in, in, uh, the clerical, um, division, you know, they just blew in the records. And, um, I, some years ago, to get, to try to get Tiffany, our jail administrator. Essentially off the schedule, so she wasn't managing inmates while she's managing the jail. We, um, we eliminated that halftime position in the sheriff's office records office. Uh, and then, um, and made Tiffany full-time off of the schedule in the jail, and that's worked pretty well. At that time Tiffany moved out and worked out in the front office, it was difficult for her to do that, but, um. Um, that's what we did, then she was able to backfill for the, the, the records office or the office manager. Uh, when she would be on breaks or on vacation or out sick. And then, um, then when COVID came along, I needed to split those two people up, because they were working way too close together. And I put Tiffany back in the jail, set her up with an office, and she was working back there, and we found that is absolutely ideal, uh. It has really worked out well to have her, uh, that much more connected to the jail. And then what happens when I don't have, um, my, my office administrator? And then Tiffany has to field the phone calls, which usually ends up being either between me and Tiffany. Grabbing those phone calls, doing those duties, so it isn't as much a matter of covering the phone, but those at the actual duties, um. Data entry, uh, billing and things like that, just don't get done or fall behind while Sarah's gone on vacations or, or out sick. And, um, then what, uh, like in Turner County, for example, they had, uh, multiple people in that office, and then, and then at some point. They, um, reduced that to one. Thought that would work, then that person quit, and there was no continuity, no, that information wasn't passed along, the sheriff ended up. Then trying to train the new person that came in, what with, with his other duties. Uh, I understand right now, one of the previous people had been there for decades is back helping out. I just don't want us to get in that situation again, and, and, uh, Sarah has no plans to leave anytime soon, but. The day would come, and, and I want to make sure that there's some continuity there, and the best way to do that is have somebody in there doing it regularly. And so, I, I do have a request in to, to rejuvenate that part-time position. And, um, um, I, and maybe this isn't the year to do it, I don't know, but the other thing I know is in a few years. Uh, when we, when we do open up our new facility, uh, I've been very straightforward that I'm gonna try to manage the jail with, uh, existing staff. But I have, uh, but I have, I do know I will need to add on the night shift at least one more person then. And I have a goal that I've always wanted to have, when space is available, to have a position in the jail that's, you know, kind of a, um. You know, I, I guess I say somebody with a social workers mentality, but somebody that would, um, that minister programs and steer people to. Programs outside the jail, uh, if they're here a short time, or bring programs into the jail for people that are here for a long time, and that's. That is to reduce recidivism, try to keep these people from just coming back, because the people we deal with, we deal with again and again, again, we know these people. And, uh, we know the names, and I want to reduce that, so. When we have the space available, and we don't do it now, because we just don't have anywhere for that person to work, but, uh, that was my hope that I would do that. At that time, we'll be having, you know, that'll be on one of my budget requests to, uh, to try to, to do that. So I didn't want to have this coming in at the same time, I guess I'm trying to build up to that. And not come in, uh, with a bunch of other needs at the same time, we're trying to, to get our, our feet under us, under the new jail, so. That's why I have it in there now, to try to get that going, um, you know, I'm not gonna be here forever either, and, and, uh, so to, to. Ideally, the, the next sheriff will have, uh, office staff that knows their stuff, and, uh, will kind of handle that sort of stuff. So that's, that's the, that's the big ask, I think, in my, my overall budget, is that, that halftime position, whether it's a halftime benefited. Or a, uh, hourly, like we do with the jailers, I can work with either one. Um. I had the, in the sheriff's budget, on the, um, the professional services line. I bumped that, and then I, and then, uh, after I submitted to, to Carrie, I, I gave it some, some thought, because I was looking at it. And I think I've maybe bumped it, the reason it went up, uh, thirty-five hundred bucks is because, uh, right about the same time I got this, I got my watch guard, uh, annual support bill. And I, whoops, I forgot that, that's a thing, because we got our watch guard, when we first got it, it came with a year of support, and then, um. So I got the bill and thought, wow, I better build that into my twenty-four budget, but then I look at my average and my costs last year, and I realize. Pretty sure I built it into this budget, I'm, I think I'm pretty comfortable at the original amount, uh, that I had last year, I think with, with the watch guard bill. Together, if you look at, uh, last year, um, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I think we're in, uh, in the mid thirties, um, what we spent last year. On that line, I actually think I have it on.
Yeah, thirty-four.
Or so, if I take on that, if I take on that thirty-five hundred onto that, I, I'm still in line. So I don't feel uncomfortable if, if we need to reduce that back down to forty. And, and be in line, that one has gone up over time, uh, our big expenses there, um, like with the other offices, is computer support. And a lot of that goes to Ericsson's, uh, we've increased that over the past few years, because Ericsson's costs a little more than our previous provider, but we get better service for it, and it's. It's a good, a good expense, um, then we have watch guard and our central square software are the other two bigger ones. Uh, otherwise, out of that line, I pay for basically anytime I hire some. Contractor, somebody to come in and do something for us that isn't, doesn't fall under, uh, one of the other lines. Uh, the other lines, uh, are just trying to keep in, in, in line with what our actual expenses are, the repairs, I just increased that a little bit, that, that's. Been a learning curve with that, uh, last year, we took a significant amount of my repairs budget, put it in Scott's budget, and I kept. Uh, what we have, and essentially the deal I have with Scott under repairs is if it's attached to the building, he pays for it, if it's. Floating in the building, you know, copiers and, and equipment, repairs on equipment, uh, refrigerator, washer, dryer, things like that, that's what I pay. So anyways, cutting it close on that this year, not quite sure how that's gonna come out in the average, so I, I went ahead and bumped that a little bit, just to try to not go over. Our supplies budget, I held the line on that, um, traveling conference, I increased that in, uh, sheriff end of jail, main reason for that is, uh, just trying to keep up with training. Um, there's a lot of training opportunities out there, um, some years ago, uh. All the training that existed for law enforcement seemed like that anybody was putting on was all about drug interdiction and things like that, now there's so much. Many more things that we have to be experts in, and, um, be beyond use of force and tactics and things like that, we have to learn, you know, medical. Uh, skills, we have to be, um, you know, proficient in, in, uh, de-escalation and, and use of force and. Um, crisis intervention, and, and, uh, there's, there's so much coming at us, and there's so much available, it's almost like drinking from the fire hose, and that's, it seems like anybody that ever worked in law enforcement retired. Puts the training course together and offers it, and, and, uh, just because it comes around. And and just because it comes around, doesn't mean we have to go to it. So I try to hold to my my current um, plan is that every deputy goes to at least forty hours a year. Uh, training in addition to what we do recurring to keep everybody up to speed on our on our uh, you know, uh, skills. And so um, to do that, though, what's changed is they're not, it's not as frequently held in peer at the law enforcement training center. They try and it's not a bad thing, but they try to host that throughout the state. So it's elsewhere. So they encourage uh, people to host um, host the training. Thankfully, Brian Jackson at USD is, you know, he he's really uh, sharp on that sort of thing and he hosts a lot. So thankfully, we're seeing a lot more around here. But we can't always send everybody. Sometimes we can't send anybody just because the way the schedule is working out. But when it's not here and it's not in peer, there is um, lodging costs. And that's essentially what that increases about is if we send people to training, it just seems like I'm paying for motel motel rooms more than we used to. It used to be it was all either right here or in peer and that's changed. So that's why I've increased that that line for the traveling conferences, essentially training, training lodging. Um, and I hate to say no to uh, training, especially if it's valuable to us, um, because I can't afford it. Um, I I dropped the inmate transport line down just a little bit. Um, just trying to trying to stay accurate on on what our actual expenses have been. Uh, the utilities cost again, the same thing. I'm seeing um, I'm seeing us not quite spending that full budget. So I don't want to put money in my budget just to put it in there. You, I'm sure if I don't need it, some other office needs it. And uh, so I try to try to say accurate there. Again, car expense, of course, I went up. I don't know what cost of gas is going to be next year. Uh, so I just kind of look at our averages and and try to presume we're going to be in the three dollar fifty cent range, I suppose, per gallon. Hopefully not four dollars a gallon. Uh, be better to see it come down to two, but I don't know if we're gonna see that. The training uh, and and equipment line, I did have that and that one's the one that fluctuates. Um, so if you look at a three year average, probably doesn't mean a lot. I tried to try to plan our our expensive equipment needs out a few years. Um, a couple of years ago, we went with the watch guard camera systems, that's the body cameras in the car systems. Then the the last uh, actually it was two years ago, we did the um, uh, new laptop computers for the patrol cars. That was a big expense. Last year, we didn't ask for anything. My intention was to ask for tasers. But um, you know, we had last year, we were doing some salary adjustments countywide. And I just kind of thought we needed to hold the line as best we could and I didn't put in for the tasers. And uh, so this year I I do want to put in for the tasers. The tasers are um, and one of the reasons we were able to do it last year was because Matt Betson, the former police chief, had upgraded his tasers and gave us all of his old ones. We've always been happy to take hand-me-downs. And uh, and so we used um, uh, we we transitioned to some used tasers. And problem is now these companies that do this tech, they know what they're doing. They sell a new product and immediately replace it with another new product and then stop supporting the old one. So you have to buy the new one. And they do it, they do it on purpose. They know exactly what they're doing. And uh, so anyway, the tasers we have now are no longer supported. Uh, some of them are, you know, not working so well. And uh, so we do need to replace them if we're gonna have them. And uh, so we're looking at a at a fifty to sixty thousand dollar expense for that. And I don't want to do that because as soon as we spend the fifty or sixty thousand dollars, the equipment we just bought is outdated. The next year, they're already putting out another new product. And then in a couple of years, they flipped the switch and they stopped supporting the old one and you have to buy the new one. So we're talking to them about a lease or a subscription plan, which is where they want everybody to be. And that's why you see Microsoft and everybody else going to this uh, subscription options. Because then they just, they have you and you have to keep coming back. But since we do keep coming back to taser, we just as well look at that option. And so we're looking at about a ten thousand dollar, but it'll be ten thousand every year. The bad thing about that is if in another year I come in and I have a thirty some thousand dollar ask for radars or or, you know, other equipment, it's gonna be on top of that ten thousand dollars for the taser. So heads up. Um, but that's my, that's that's my my recommendation on that. Is that we're talking about whether or not we go with the the newest generation or the next to newest generation. Uh, I've got two taser instructors that are uh, pretty, pretty on top, well, on top of this. They're recommending that next to newest one because of significant savings. And then and it's in three to five years, we're going to be switching anyway. And but the nice thing is if they break, they fix it. If, you know, they keep us, keep us up to date on software updates for that expense. Um, down books, uh, five hundred bucks. I I think that's been five hundred bucks since I've been sheriff. We spend somewhere between two and five hundred, depending on how many uh, volumes they update in STCL. So I I've always left that alone. You see an increase on the furniture and minor equipment line. Um, the reason for that is um, technology. I have uh, about half of the desks upstairs, basically mine and the administrative desks in the jail have desktop scanners. Um, we use them all day. I'm probably scanning something every hour, if not dozens of things at a time. The deputies scan all the time too. But what they do is they walk down the hall, they scan on the uh, the network copier and they email it to themselves. Then they go back to their desk and they save it on their desktop and then they attach it. And um, just about every piece of paper we touch gets scanned. Uh, you know, even if lots of times things we print turn around and get scanned because it gives you sign it and then you scan it back in. So I um, I would, I would really like to get those desktop scanners on those deputy desks and and help them do their work faster and better. And um, our software, their central square software that we use is really well designed for that. With a with a mouse click, you can just attach documents to the case report uh, without it being maybe five steps and including walking down the hall twice. And um, so that that's my goal there is to add add those. Um, we've been, you know, doing that for a while with our other other desks. And I tried the um, a lease deal with Canon for the ones we have. And it was actually a nightmare that I just finally got away from. Uh, I don't want to do that. I want to buy them outright. I don't want to lease them from Canon. Again, they're very difficult to work with. Um, that's that's sheriff's office budget, I guess, before I go on to jail, unless you want me to do about jail and talk about answering any questions is all together.
Our our car stuff is working out okay now.
Sorry, yeah, I didn't mention on that. I jumped off of that. Um, yeah, this year I have one and a half cars. For a few years ago, we started budgeting for one and a half cars. This year, we're gonna spend it all, Carrie holds that certain amount back this year, we'll spend it all. So that's why this year, when she put that half car back into the budget, that's why it jumped up to ninety thousand. We didn't budget ninety thousand for it, but we had to add it in so we could spend it. And so this year we'll zero that out and we'll start up again next year with the one and a half cars. That's where the seventy comes in, seventy thousand five hundred. You never know what a car is going to cost, you know, next year or actually in two years. So we just kind of look at our, look at our averages. Uh, we got those Dodge Durangos this year for a little bit less. Um, somehow or another, uh, city police department was able to get a Ford ordered, even though they canceled our order and then they weren't taking any bids or giving any bids. So uh, we'll see how that works out for them. You know, ours got canceled. They haven't received it yet. But so we have the two Dodges. Uh, I predict we'll probably be back to Fords again in the future.
Those Dodges seem to be pretty durable then or?
They're sitting uh, unmarked and unequipped in our basement garage right now. We haven't driven them except for back from period yet. We're waiting on parts.
Sure.
It's this COVID supply line thing is getting better, but it's not back. We're not back. We're right now, literally, we're waiting on adapters for the light bars to go from an Explorer to a Dodge. And they're just mounts, we're waiting on that. And when those come, those cars will get equipped and we'll get them on the road and we'll get the old ones off.
But we've got to buy all new cages and everything from interior, right?
Yeah, they again, uh, just like with tech, they they've learned how to make it so it's very specific to the year and modeled where it won't transfer to the next car. And so
Mine does that go in then?
That that what I try to do with equipment like that is uh, depending on the cost of the car, I want all of it to come out of machinery and auto equipment. And uh, if we overspend out of that, then I start looking at my training equipment line or even uh, car expense. I just, I just kind of look at where I've got money uh, to take it out of. Uh, conceivably, I guess I could overspend out of the one and always take it out of the one. I probably really should do that. Then in the future, we can get more accurate on that. But um, that's what I tend to do. Ideally for me, it comes out of the auto equipment line. And then I tried to have the uh, the installation can cost uh, you know, one to two thousand dollars. I generally pay that out of the car expense line, that car expense line is oil changes, tires and maintenance work. And so I see the uh, the the maintenance work of the installation tends to come out of car expense. Unless maybe we just got the car for a really good deal and I've got money left in auto equipment.
What did the Durangos cost? Do you remember?
I can't remember exactly.
Because we budgeted forty five each.
Yeah, it came, it was under, it was under that a little bit. Yeah, generally I budget forty five for the car with the idea that the car runs about forty and that gives me five thousand dollars for the equipment to change over. And I think they're about forty two.
Yeah, that's what I remembered.
Yep. And then, yeah, both of them were to the penny the same because, you know, they honored their bid. Still got one coming. And I don't know if you folks heard, we had the the extra Dodgers ordered that we ordered last year. And then um, we got one and they said the other two are en route. And then the uh, then they called me and said, well, good news and bad news. One's here and the other one got damaged by a tornado on its way here. And so it has body damage and glass damage. And uh, rather than deliver it damaged, letting the dealer take it to a body shop and fix it. Uh, Dodge called it back to the factory and they're gonna, he says they're gonna clone it essentially. It'll, it'll be a new car, but it'll have a new van, but I don't know what that means. If they just swap the van plate and fix it so they don't have to have it be repaired on the title. I don't know. So anyway, they say we'll see that in twenty twenty three. I don't know when, but they tell us we'll still see that car this year.
Clock is ticking.
Yep.
There's still six months.
Cars have been, uh, it's been, it just seems to be such a straightforward thing and now it's gotten crazy. So yeah, so seventy thousand five hundred represents one and a half cars.
So then when we assign aside that half a car, is that like twenty twenty two?
Um, well, what I've been doing, yeah, it was forty five thousand divided by two, whatever.
Okay, just so I know.
Yep.
What to assign?
I don't know if that comes out, that math works out correctly.
Five divide four. Five.
Yeah, the line out of sixty seven five instead of seven thousand.
So I must have bumped that, I must have bumped that because of the expense of replacing equipment. I I don't have my notes on it. What's that? Yeah. Changing out the the stuff is, it would just seeing that cost so much more because nothing's transfers anymore. Um, I don't have my notes on where I came with that number there upstairs. So that's what I recall. All right, on the jail, and I know you're going to talk about the opt out today too. So we'll probably get into that a little bit now. I just made myself lines because things don't fit. Jail again, the the salaries are the salaries, uh, but I give you two options, what was the the different colas that you had requested? And otherwise, no real changes in there like I had with the sheriff with a request for a half position. Um, the lines, I don't really um, didn't really change anything except for that traveling conference again for the jailers trying to get them, get them to training and try to keep, we we've got some jail staff that are really sticking it out with us, which is a good thing for us. And uh, I just really want to uh, encourage their professional development, get them to training more. It used to be, we trained our key people and and everybody else got OJT because they didn't stay long anyway. But uh, the longer they stay, the better. We want them at what they do because then they're going to train the the new people. Uh, I don't want to forego training for the jailers because we can't afford it. Now, we do have a training line for the jail from seven hundred to a thousand. That one, a lot of that training tends to be uh, online or correspondence training, we're paying for the courses. And um, and so I increased that uh, because those cost more. Uh, the traveling conferences again, motel rooms, if we have to have to send them to a training. Um, I don't think I changed really anything other than those two lines in the jail. I held the line on the out of county boarding. I um, you know, that's that's the big one. We're at five hundred thousand in twenty twenty three. I'm requesting the same five hundred thousand twenty twenty four. Uh, we we were seeing um, our average daily population has been down the first half of this year and actually last fall as well. And I was really starting to, you know, thinking we're going to give back a lot of that money this year. I I still think we're going to be under five hundred thousand this year, but we're seeing our our numbers go way up. I think uh, we have something like twenty four inmates in custody at any given time these past few months. And uh, the numbers have just been been going up. Uh, I think we'll, I don't think we're going to go over on five hundred thousand. I don't think we're going to have a problem. We'll obviously be talking about that when we get into October, November, whether or not we need my new supplement, but I don't think we will for this year. Um, we were looking at the last uh, twelve months, our average daily population was sixteen point two five. Uh, I budgeted based on twenty, but then presuming that not all of those twenty go to other jails because we do hold for up to three days. And um, so we um, so we're we're seeing that average daily population being less than what we actually budgeted for. And in fact, uh, because of the what we've been sending to other jails, we're probably looking at about thirteen point eight eight beyond our average daily population of who we're housing elsewhere. Uh, so that's why we're seeing that down now. The um, the sheet Carrie sent that has the three year average for us to use for a budget, that was run in April. So it it only has about one quarter of expenses. It had us at that time uh, using a hundred thousand up to five hundred thousand in our out of county boarding. Of course, we've spent for about a couple, three months and those numbers are getting back up into where our monthly, monthly expenses are in the thirty thousand plus range. Um, these days again, which is what it was when we first started uh, housing out of county. Uh, so next year, I I think that um, if I if I just presumed twenty again, um, then we're looking at at uh, what I expect. Um, that would cost six hundred and twenty thousand five hundred if we house twenty out of county. But again, since we house up to three days here, if we can, um, I'm probably thinking about fifteen being our average daily population that we're housing. And then I'm guessing at about eighty five dollars a day. That's what Yankton costs now. Union County is is eighty. Um, I expect that to increase. But uh, so if I figure eighty five, I expect our expenses next year to be in the four hundred and sixty five thousand dollars um, range. If 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 I'm guessing correctly, and that's, you know, I'm guessing. And um, there isn't a lot I can uh, can really uh, give you firm numbers on, but other than just seeing how our trends are are going.
Um, we do the three days plus work release also, right?
Yeah, work release we'll keep here. We don't have a lot of work release, but yeah, we keep work release here as long as they're here. Um, another thing within that three days, and that's not in in included in my budget at all, but you do get in your monthly reports from me, is we actually make money in our jail. We we do actually charge other counties for housing and we receive that because we will hold up to three days. Turner County brings all their arrestees to us and we'll hold them up to three days. And then they have to get them out. So we're actually generating revenue while we're spending. But that doesn't, that's not reflected here, uh, but you should see that.
What are we charging per dam?
Um, Turner County, I think our contract right now is seventy. But I think we've talked about whether or not that should go up. It hasn't. We can sure talk about that in January. Off the top of my head right now, I think that it's still at seventy. And that's a contract we have with them. I think our our going rate for counties that we don't have contract might be seventy five and I should check that. I can get back to you about that.
Almost everybody's going to Yankton or Union County right now.
Yeah, most go to Union County, Union County, if they have a, if they have an issue with uh, some people are just so dang obstinate that they can't, they they just disrupt their whole jail. That's the luxury you have when you're housing for somebody else. You could say, just get the guy out of here. And um, if it's your own inmate, you're stuck with them no matter what. And so when uh, some people we have are just so difficult that they disrupt their entire operation and they say, get them out of here. Well, it's really hard to find a bed for that guy because I'm not going to trick somebody. And so we tell them the about the problems. So sometimes Yankton will take some of them. And that's only because maybe they've got a self full obstinate people that they can put them in with, that they've got an available bed. And you know, sometimes it just works. Um, we move a lot of people to Brookings or Davison County when we just plain can't find another bed. But most of them are Union County. Uh, and second to that is Yankton. Where Yankton, we might have maybe three to five inmates at a given time in custody there. And then um, and then generally uh, people because of classification problems will go to Davison County.
We've had a few go to Minnehaha, haven't we?
No, we haven't had one in Minnehaha County quite a while now. They always say no.
I thought I saw something going through on expenses. Maybe it was something else.
Might have been JDC.
Could have been JD.
Okay. Um.
Well, I I I was just curious about um, uh, in inmates pay uh, a a nightly rate too, don't they? Do we, what what do we charge for that?
Well, we charge fifteen dollars a day um, for sentence inmates and twenty dollars a day for worker lease. Reason worker lease pay more is because we have electronic monitoring on them and they paid for that. We don't collect all that. We don't collect all that.
I was just gonna ask. Okay.
And, um,
Oh, sorry. And sorry, it's a little hard to zoom. I, I was just wondering about like what percentage of the amount that we, that we bill people for, do we end up getting in?
Yeah, I could, I could look that up for you. It's, it's small. Most of what we collect is the work release because they don't get to get out unless they pay. Um, we do have people that care about their credit rating and care about getting a future mortgage and do pay. When they get out, we send them, we send them, um, invoices, we send a few invoices. If they don't pay, then we, uh, we forward them to the auditor and then they'll do, uh, send it on to collections and file lean. Um, but we do collect money. Um, percentage-wise, I could only guess, uh, without, uh, doing a little research. Uh, I'd say it's low.
I think when Mike and I you a few years ago about that, it was in the fifteen to twenty percent range. And I don't know if that includes what you collect directly or just what you forwarded to Carrie.
Probably both.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was under twenty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's extremely rare that we collect anything after we send it up for a lien. Yeah. Those people aren't gonna pay.
Yeah. I think it was in the range of twenty percent. That's money-wise, it wasn't necessarily number of, uh, invoice from ways.
Hopefully, it's just intended to offset us somewhat. It, it certainly does, and it's nothing that we can really hang our hat on as a source of revenue. Um, but the worker lease, worker lease essentially are paying for their stay, their, the meals that they do eat here and their electronic monitoring does offset that. Sure, sure doesn't pay the jailer salaries. But they're paying something.
Thank you.
Um,
There's one other line I was gonna mention.
Oh, JDC. I didn't change that. Uh, that's the thirty-five thousand dollar line. Um, we, you just never know, uh, even if you look at our averages and try to hold that, it's, it's, it wildly fluctuates. We can have a year where we don't have any kids that, that, um, really run up to costs. Another year, we can have one kid completely absorb the entire budget for the year in a few months. And I don't wanna budget for, say, having one in custody the entire year because that just, we'll have an, uh, unusually high line item that essentially drains down the general fund and, you know, takes money that you can't give other, other offices budgets and I may or may not need it. So, uh, my hope is always try to shoot for the average and, and hope that works. This year to date, I think we were sitting at zero up until this month. Uh, zero, and then we have a bill for fifteen thousand. So.
Because what is it, like three hundred and fifty or three hundred bucks a day?
That's what it is. Now it's gonna be four hundred and fifty-eight and change next year.
Yeah, big change.
Yeah, if you recall, next year, they're gonna, they're gonna start their bond on their new jail or new JDC facility, but they're not asking us for share, to share in it like they did in twen- in nineteen ninety-five. And, um, and so what they decided to do is increase the per diem for all the partner counties. Um, but yet we won't be paying, um, we won't be paying any debt toward it. And then we have in my, in my jail budget, I don't have it in my notes, but there's a, a number for, uh, um, the JDC um, debt. And when we paid that off in twenty fourteen, um, we sunsetted it a year early, um, supposed to be, uh, done in twenty fifteen. We paid that off in twenty fourteen and Karen and I have always just talked and we left that line there, even though it's been zero since twenty fourteen. Uh, because we knew that the day would come, they would build a new facility, expect us to share in that debt, but they're not gonna do that. And so we're just gonna pay it as we go. If our kids behave themselves and, you know, things work well and the parents step up and prosecution works, uh, you know, fluent, or, or, you know, fluidly then, and they're not in there for a long time. Uh, move on to DOC if that happens, then that's a good thing for us to pay higher per diem and not be paying that. But every now and then you get a kid that the state attorney just can't seem to get through, uh, to DOC or can't get them home. It maybe, some of these kids don't belong in DOC, but they don't belong at home either. And, uh, to try to figure that out sometimes can take a while. And then we see these budgets or, uh, bills of five and seven thousand dollars a month for one kid. And, um, so right now, this last month, we had two kids in there for a good part of a month. And so we're seeing that fifteen thousand dollars. So hopefully, um, hopefully then, uh, that doesn't hold and we go over this thirty-five this year. Um, we have gone over on the jail or the JDC line, uh, now and then, generally speaking, we're under on that. And so I hope that we're under on, uh, hopefully thirty-five thousand's excessive, but I don't think it's so excessive that we should cut it. Just trying to anticipate. Especially with the, our per diem going up by in the neighborhood of a hundred dollars a day per kid.
As long as they can get somebody in there to evaluate the kids, that was the problem before.
Yeah, evaluating and.
LSS was not.
Yeah, and then we have, uh, we have, uh, you know, sometimes just trying to find out where the kid belongs because maybe home's not the option. And, but, you know, we're trying not to send these kids off to JDC for, or DOC for significant amount of time. I was just gonna do. Yeah, we'll be looking at thirteen thousand dollars a month for a kid if they, if they stay in for a month next year. And so the significance. So a couple of months, one kid can, will eat that up in no time. So that, that's no change, but I was just explaining what I expect to see in that. Other than that, you know, a, as always, biggest part, especially in an office with a bunch of staff, the biggest part of my budget's always gonna be wages. That's what it is, so hopefully you can, you know, I, colas are good things for us. Um, if you can, if you can, uh, afford the, the, the five point eight that you're considering, I, I'd appreciate that because it helps us with our retention, helps us with our hiring if that happens. And, um, and also helps us prevent what we've had happen last year and a couple of previous years where you have these big bumps to try to catch up. You know, if you don't keep up, you gotta catch up eventually. And so ideally, we, we keep up and, um, and don't have to see those big, big increases, so. If that works for you, but I understand money's tight. Sorry, Jeff, you've been over my shoulder most of this, so. I'm trying to listen for you.
Yep, no, it's good. You've, you've, you've got my questions when I've had them. Thank you, Andy.
Thanks. Anything else?
Any more questions?
I'll stick around for that opt-out discussion, but we've probably kinda already gone there, so.
Thanks, Andy. And Linnea. This is gonna be your favorite thing about your job.
Funny, because we always tell people we don't do taxes, we do value. Um, I guess, do you want me to walk you through it? Do you have questions about any items?
Yeah, so, um, a- anything that you see, um, that's increased significantly?
I guess the one thing that I would like to point out is the professional services line. Um, I added in the, I believe it's the national.
Twenty-seven.
Yep, sorry. Um, the National Association of, um, County Officials has a leadership course that's about two thousand dollars. So I did add that into the professional services for myself. Um, and then the other significant increase would be the supplies and material. We've seen, um, stamps continue increasing, so our mailing fees have gone up quite a bit, especially with assessment notices. Otherwise, everything's pretty much the same as last year.
Stamps just took another hit this week, didn't it?
Yep.
Looks, looks pretty straightforward. Um, the, um, furniture and minor equipment.
Um, I did put in for a new desk for our office. One of them is on its last leg. We have two that are updated, but one is quite, quite old. We'll also be looking next year at getting another com- um, updated computer. One of our computers is three, three or four years old at this point, so that one will need to be updated next year. That's also included in that furniture and minor equipment line.
Do you try and do a computer every year?
We do. Um, we had some, a fan went out on one a few years ago, so that got updated early. And then Ina's, um, also got updated early, so we're kind of ahead. So this one's on its, what I said, two or third year. We all, we're also looking at getting tires for our vehicle this year, so that's kinda gonna take, we'll do computer, 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 tires, computer.
And then in terms of cars, you're way, way down.
Um, yes.
Your average. So how often do you replace, what's your replacement program for cars?
I don't have one yet, but I probably will by next year.
Yeah, something to think about.
Yep. Um, our vehicle is new. We were able to purchase a new one, um, with all the money we saved over that year and a half of not having any travel fees. That is the other thing to note is that our, um, in traveling conference, that went up because our SDAO schooling fees are all increasing by, so the SD, the ones put on by Department of Revenue are increasing by fifty dollars per registration. And then the I double A O are increasing by a hundred per registration. Um, so it's good this year. I looked at it again after we got, we got that notification last week. Um, but moving forward, that will have to go up, including our hotel fees for all of our travel. Otherwise, everything else is pretty straightforward. As far as the books go, that's something that hopefully next year we won't have to purchase books because our office will still be the same staff. Um, but we like to keep that line item in there. Um, Melissa will have used PAP next year, so that is some book expense. Um, trying to think of what else I had to increase. Yeah, I think mailing and then travel is kind of our big, big ones right now.
Looks good.
I didn't build anything this year, um, as far as looking into that new tax program software yet. That's something I'm still digging into when I have time, but we do still have Patty through end of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, so. Yeah, that'll be on the twenty twenty-five budget, hopefully. Hopefully we have it figured out by that point.
Any other questions?
Looks good. Looks good.
Pretty, pretty straightforward, nothing crazy. Right? Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. Wait. We're up to opt-out. So Carrie, if you wanna talk about that, it looks like we've got two options.
Um, I mean, you can choose any number in between. I just, I just threw together a couple scenarios for you.
Yeah. Uh, you know, looking, looking at these two numbers or at, at the way that the numbers work, um, it looks, uh, you know, with these numbers hold, um, it, uh, I can't see passing a budget that would incorporate, um, like a six percent hole. I mean, isn't that what we're looking at here?
Yeah, like I said, I went over, went over everything until I was blue in the face yesterday and, and over the weekend and, um, I, I think it's just a huge combination of things. I think the inflation and, um, you know, software costs and things like that. Overall increase in the budget just because of those things.
Did you add the money back in from the bond that we've paid out?
I did not, although a lot of those things that we paid just real recently hit after that April. So they weren't really figured in because when I, when I figured the budget, it's figured as of like April instead of, uh, you know, July. So that should wash.
Yeah, it, you know, looking at the, I mean, obviously a two hundred and fifty thousand, um, opt-out would be much preferable, but, um, I, you, you know, to, to actually build into the budget. Um, being six percent down, it, you know, seems really irresponsible. And, you know, it doesn't mean that we have to, I mean, we know that our numbers are gonna be refined as time goes on. Um, but I, I think we have to, we've got a deadline, yeah, for opt-out.
We do, um, I believe that that bonds might be.
Yeah, so.
Neither of those two options get us out of the hole according to this budget. We're still, we're still not meeting budget, so. We're gonna have to do something here on this budget. And people are not gonna like it.
And I think, you know, the other thing is that last year, we discussed that we were able to do the lower opt-outs. But knowing that this year again, it could go back up.
But the opt-out was for the jail. You know, that was what that money was for was to pay for out of out-of-town housing, I guess we'll call it.
Yeah.
So we need to figure it out in the rest of the budget where where we're gonna start cutting.
And when you consider that, you know, like Andy said, he might get up to that about three sixty-five, I think he threw out it as a number and that doesn't include the gas and the, the wages and stuff that he spent transporting those inmates to. Three sixty-five with a, you know, a, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar opt-out.
Four sixty-five, right, Andy?
Or four, four sixty-fives. So, I mean, we may have been a little short sighted there, but not really knowing what we were getting into either, it's hard to predict the future. And things will definitely get easier and more predictable as the jail is built. Get open.
During in those other indirect costs, you know, we're talking at least a half a bill. What those extra costs are going to be for us until we open the jail.
It looks, yeah, w- a- am I, am I, uh, getting it right to the, in, so H two here, uh, down six point oh one percent. And then that's including the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar opt-out. So if we had a seven hundred thousand dollar opt-out, we'd be down about fifty-seven thousand. Is that, is that, is that what other people are seeing?
Fifty-seven, eight, seventy-five, one point six two percent. Well, the other thing too is you've got, let's see, operating transfers. I'm assuming that's our bond payment?
That, no, um, that is not. That is what we transfer to the highway each year and the emergency management. So mostly highway to cover their budget.
So that's, what is that transfer, wheel tax?
That is, so the highway department has their revenue each year, including the wheel tax. Um, any money that they get from the state, things like that, that goes into the highway fund. And then we transfer from county general every year to support the remainder of their budget. Because the highway fund itself does not generate enough to cover that four million dollar budget. And that's, I mean, that's as much of a balancing act as the, the jail costs, you know, the.
Yeah.
Roads and the bridges that need to be repaired and money has to come from somewhere, too.
I, I'm just not sure that we can find um savings. Um, to get us to a two hundred fifty thousand dollar opt out. Without really affecting um the ability of departments to do their work. Um, you know, I, I think everybody so far has talked about software issues. Um, and. Man, that's. Yeah, and, and we've got inflation. I mean, in inflation is, is, is. You know, this is an inflation number, right?
I think every department tried so hard to hold the line. The last few years, and it's, it's really finally catching up to the point where. We have to increase those budget requests or. I'm not gonna make it. Unfortunately, Rod's materials have gone up for highway and just like everything else.
So we're gonna transfer two, two point three million to Rod on top of the four point six he's giving?
No, the two point three is gonna help support that four point six.
Okay, so you better run the budget again because you're showing both on the budget. Right? You're showing the four point six million for Rod's highway department plus the two point three.
Now, so when you look at the. The cash balance estimation worksheet. You see um under that highway and bridge fund, you see that right as of April thirtieth. There's a million forty five thousand, million forty six. And estimated revenue yet to come in in two thousand twenty three of. One point one roughly. That transfer in is that two point three. And that next column. And then the expenditures over there at the end. Um, is what's left of his twenty twenty three budget. That was yet to be spent. So that leaves a projected. Estimated cash balance there of five eleven, five twenty in the fund. So then if you go to the budget sheet. On that very last page. Under the road and bridge fund column, you see that five hundred thousand, that's, that's part of that five eleven. It's applied to next year's budget. And then we're budgeting transferring two point five next year. From county general to the highway and you see that under other financing sources.
What page is that on?
Um. The workbook I'm looking at, it's on page seven.
So this page two cash balance estimation, assuming those dates are wrong.
Yes, yeah, there's that, yeah, adding there.
My computer just froze.
So I guess to really answer your question, Travis, the, the estimated revenue. On that cash balance estimation worksheet is. Any revenue besides that two point three million. And then that's this year and then next year is. Be two point five.
Would somebody like to make a motion? Or actually, we need to fill in the, the blanks on the opt out resolution.
And we have to do that today?
Friday is the deadline.
Done by Friday.
And you know. Correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, but the opt out is um, is a safety measure. Um, it doesn't mean that. We have to spend that much. It may be that we would like to request department heads. Um, to go back and see if they can find us a small percentage of savings. Um, I, you know, I would be opposed to commissioners going in and slashing. Um, because I think department heads know um where their discretion lies a lot better than we do. Um, and uh. You know, we, we may be able to ask them to do that. They're, you know, we haven't heard from everybody yet today, so. Um, you know, there may be others who have a little bit of room to move. Um, but um I, I would be extremely uncomfortable. Um, with uh, with a two hundred fifty thousand dollar opt out. Given the rate of inflation and the number of mandated activities that we. We have to take care of. Um, you know, we, we don't have discretion over mu- much of what we do. Um, you know, we, we can't say to a prospective inmate, we can't say to the court, just behave. No, uh, we.
You know, this yellowed out part in page twos. Still be almost sixty K short with the. Seven hundred and fifty K opt out and going with a three percent cola increase.
Yeah, and you know, in some, in some sense, I. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm not happy with the three percent cola increase. Um, yeah, Jeffrey.
Um, I, I was wondering, is, is the seven fifty a ceiling or is that uh?
It's a ceiling.
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
You, you could opt out for, for as much as you want to.
Oh, right.
It was just a, just a scenario I threw out there to just give you guys a picture.
Yeah, so, so we could opt out to even, um, but my sense is that. You know, that point six two percent gap. You know, is, is. Is closable, um, whereas I don't think the um. Six percent cap is closable.
Yeah. I, I, I think that, you know, the, the, the three percent cola is unfortunate, that, that is a. Real wages pay cut to everybody, but. I, I do think that the five point eight seems undoable. On the ground, thinking about constituents and uh that are gonna be paying these bills, including all of us. Um, what's uh, what's the, the dollar amount, you know? Per thousand of assessed value that, that is the, the difference between uh. Say a seven fifty or a two fifty or an eight ten, you know?
Just trying to see if I can pull up some reports here to maybe get an answer to that.
So without doing an opt out, Carrie, what are we about ten percent over the budget?
Yeah, probably.
Into three percent cool. With a three percent cool, yeah. Do we have a number of what? How big a spread we are at the five point? Eight percent cool. Which is that increase?
That was, yeah, I didn't send that to you guys because. It was looking so ugly as it was.
Yeah, no, I know, just curious.
Yeah, uh. Let me see if I've got that here. I think I do. I ran it so many different ways yesterday. Again, at like a minus seven point two eight on that percent there.
That, uh, make sure I got that clear. So the minus, we're, so we're, we're down seven point two eight percent. If you'd say seven hundred fifty dollar, uh, seven hundred fifty. Uh, opt out and a five point eight percent cola, is that right?
Seven fifty or two fifty?
That might have been, that was, I think that was two fifty.
That was two fifty, okay.
I don't think I ran seven fifty. I think I could probably do that quick for you, but.
So I'm, I'm gonna send everyone, we've got preliminary numbers on the salary comparison. And I'm just gonna send it to everybody right now. Um, because I, I think.
Stuff up for you.
Carrie, what was the date that you cut the budget off then?
April 30th.
So I sent everybody the preliminary draft of the salary study, so just know that, you know, it's not something that I've reviewed or refined. This is, this is the interns' draft.
And with a 750 opt-out and a 5.8, we're looking at minus 1.96%.
Say that again?
With a 750 opt-out and the 5.8, we're looking at a minus 1.96%.
You know exactly when we paid those draws, Carrie?
I don't. It was in May.
It was in May?
May.
We didn't pay any before that?
May. What, on the 9th? If I'm looking at it right. We have had architecture and things like that, things that we've paid to Tegra over the last few years that came before the bond, so I don't know that we can include them in the bond. I don't know how that works.
Well, even if we didn't, I was just wondering on this, because we've already paid $418,000 out, just in the last, in May, if that's when we got paid it.
Yeah, yeah, it was over 400,000. And we haven't received the draw for that yet, but then that also wouldn't be included in this.
The draw for the 418,000?
Right.
Yeah, we should have paid that already.
Right. We paid it, but we're waiting for the draw from the bonds. And that'll be coming in, but none of that is included since it was cut off at April 30th. Thoughts?
What's, what's that been?
Thoughts?
Here's my thought. We're gonna need to have another meeting before Friday. We don't have enough time to go over this. We don't have enough information. Carrie, if you could get us the numbers to we'll just leave the opt-out completely off of it to begin with.
Okay.
Because then we'll know what number we have to add in later.
Okay.
But we're gonna have to come up with some, some cuts. And I think we need to get back to a 10% positive number. That's not very much money. When you start talking about the budget, how much should we have in the savings account then? We've normally ran 25 to 30%. Once Carrie gets us that number, we're gonna have to go through this and figure out what we can't just add to the opt-out to 1.5 million. We're gonna, there's gonna have to be cuts to the budget. And I don't even, personally, I don't think we should waste our time on 5.8 on the cola. I don't think it's ever gonna happen. I don't know how we do it.
I don't see how we do it either. Looking, looking at, you know, the salary information that the intern came up with. We're actually, relative to other counties, in many places, doing well. In other offices, not so well. But I think that's a conversation for another time. You know, we, there, there may be some, you know, we, we should look at it in terms of, in terms of equity. But, but I don't see that as, you know, something that we can do very quickly. And the budget needs, needs to be done, needs to be done quickly. Yeah, you know, I, I, I would like to ask department heads, maybe to take a, a second look and see, see what they can do.
And we'll be able to have that conversation this afternoon with the department heads, correct?
Yep.
So, I mean, that seems like the, like the next step. Explaining where, where we are in the gap, the gap that we have to fill. And I, I, I will have some issues, you know, in terms of a meeting this week because I'm flying out this afternoon. You know, for a serious illness in the family.
Well, even if you weren't here, Betty, you could, you can go through the budget too and at least email us your thoughts.
Yep, yep, yep. And I may, I may be able to, I may be able to zoom in, you know, it's just not clear to me how free I'll be or where I'll be exactly.
So how much time does everybody need? I mean, is Friday a good day then? Do we, do we take the three days or two and a half days to? That really only gives the department heads two days to work on it. Or have some input on it.
And it doesn't give Carrie much time either in terms of turnover, but, but I think Friday would be the only day, really.
No, what if she could get us the number that we need to start work? What do we have to opt out and/or save? And, and just try and break it down to that number. Would it be fair to say the 5.8 is off the table then? Would we do that? I, I personally, I don't know how we do 5.8.
What, what has worked, I, you know, I talked a little bit about catching up and keeping up. You, you folks did a lot for the employees last year. They can, they caught up, and that probably brought a lot of the equity that Betty's talking about, because we used to, it's not compared very well, but now we do. I just don't want you to fall behind. 3% sure beats what we've had. There, there have been years in the past where we were looking, we had 1%, 1.2% I remember one year. And so 3% is better than that. So, you know, I commend you for even 3%. But just, you know, the fact that I, and I see the, the way you folks think and talk is, you're not blind to this, and you do your best, and I appreciate that.
Well, whatever we end up with, I hope the employees understand too that, you know, since what, the last 11 years that I've been here, we've really stepped up the pay grade.
Yep, they do.
There's been, outside of last year, we, there was an adjustment. I can't remember what year we did that, but it was a big, it was a big jump from what we had.
And I, I would hope that once we're through this crunch, we can continue to do that. And I, I think continuing to compare salaries, you know, makes, makes a lot of sense. You know, you, you, you can kind of see that Brookings County is doing that. You know, they're super, super competitive. You know, smaller counties have, have a harder time, and we are, despite our population, you know, in terms of property tax, we, we, we've got less, less property than any other county in the state. And yet, you know, we have a significant population, so it, it, it winds up hurting, you know, whenever.
Well, we get through this jail.
Yep.
We get that bill, because it's gonna be a crunch for the next two years.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Lane. Can I ask a been listening in, generally speaking, what are we talking about? Are we in that 10% range or we gotta cut? Just as a guess?
Yeah, so if, it, it looks, and Carrie, you're the, you're the expert here, but it, 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 it looks like, what are we, 7 point something over?
Yeah, and I'm just thinking too, like, the health insurance being one of those things that's kind of hard to control every year. I probably budgeted high for that, and I can go back and cut some of that back. I budgeted a 10% increase. We haven't seen 10% the last few years. They always tell me to budget 10 because they don't know what that's gonna be. I can go back and cut it to, you know, five or seven, if, if you all think that's appropriate.
What, one thing with that, Carrie, can you send those projections out? Because like on my sheet, I've got, I've got nothing for insurance, I've got nothing in for salary.
Yeah, usually I fill all that in.
Right, but if we need to make cuts, we need to do an apples-to-apples kind of thing to see where where we're at here.
Well, and that would be, that would be something that would affect everybody's budgets, if, if I go back and adjust those health insurance numbers. So I don't, I don't know if you guys are comfortable going lower on that? Just let me know.
We, do we know what the prevailing increase rate is, rate of increase in health insurance across the country is this year?
I don't.
See if we can figure that out.
I know, we've been, we were what, 2 point something percent this last year? The year before that, it was in the same ballpark. And that's been really low. I've been surprised by those numbers.
Well, I think it helps that we're dealing with the nonprofit here.
Can you make the call to see?
I can see if they have any idea. You know, usually they tell me we don't have a clue at this point, you know, figure 10%, but I can, I can see if they have any idea.
That's kind of based on our claims too.
Yeah.
So if we don't have a lot of claims, it doesn't jump up as hard. And we have a fairly young staff.
Yeah.
It's younged up, selling the, you know, next year, this year.
So the average cost of health insurance between 2022 and 2023 increased by 4%. And
I want to say that's in the ballpark of what she told us too when she came for the meeting. I want to say it was in that 4%, and we were lower.
If we see, if we adjusted down to say 6%, one and a half times that uh, going forward, instead of 10, health insurance is a pretty big chunk.
Mm-hmm, it is. It's a huge chunk.
So Travis, you said, you said you'd like to be at 10%? I think that's the, about the realistic number we're gonna be at. Because we're usually, so, so does that mean we're, right now, we're 17% off? At $250,000 opt-out, yes. Okay.
Was that, that was with the 3% cola?
Yes.
Okay.
But hopefully that, with the department heads this afternoon, we can have that conversation. I don't wanna, I mean, maybe they'll have some other ideas. I mean, I know what, like where my wife works or where I've heard of other places where they'll give you the cola, but then all of a sudden you're paying something for your health insurance. They'll give you the cola, but then all of a sudden you're paying something for your health insurance. So we really didn't give you anything and I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna get created that way. I mean, that's just easy.
Yeah. That really bites the employees pretty badly afterwards.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm hoping the department heads have some. Some good ideas, maybe not necessarily today, but by Friday.
Yeah.
And what I'll do then is wait for the department heads to get their updates to me. And I'll start completely over without, without any opt-out. See where we land and then we can work in from there.
I think that's the pure way to do it.
We'll see where we have to. See where we have to be.
That's good. Sounds like a plan.
You, you, you'd figure within three percent then?
If that's what you guys want me to do, that's what I'll do.
Well, just leave it in there.
Okay.
Or what are you worried about, Dick? What do you?
Well, I just. I think, I think that we wanna. It's probably a four for us to go to about three percent. Uh, that would, and if we, but if we had to cut it further. That would give us more realistic estimate going forward, I think, if we did it three.
And, and what would you do at three?
Well, have her figure everything in with a three.
With a three percent cola, yeah.
Three percent cola, but not worry about the opt-out. Leave the opt-out at zero.
Yep.
As Travis suggested. I think that gives us a more realistic starting point to figure our opt-out.
Then, and, and ten percent is just what I threw out there.
Yeah.
To have a number to shoot for.
Yeah.
Carrie can tell us how far off, or how many dollars we have to either save or opt out for to. Well, is this on the, uh, two thousand fifteen, we got. What is it, nine million, two hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred four thousand? Sounds like the budget. So seventeen percent of that is one point five million, seventy-seven thousand. But we would even need to cut to give us that seventeen percent. Cut or opt out? Yes, combination of both.
You've got a. Probably kind of have a running list of the corrections that we ran onto today.
Yep.
Could be correcting as we go or?
Um, some, yes. Yeah.
See if we could end up with a corrected. Version of what you've got. Could be helpful, but Jess got something?
Oh, Jeffrey?
I was just gonna say that, uh, based on that discussion of the health insurance costs, I think that going to the six percent. Across the board rather than the ten makes sense to me. That seems, it doesn't seem, uh, imprudent. Uh, are other people comfortable with that?
You're talking health insurance?
Health insurance.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very comfortable with six percent. I mean, I, I, I think the latest number that I saw was. Uh, as of February twenty twenty-three and it was the cost of health insurance. Had increased previous year by, it was like two point something percent. So I, I, I'm comfortable with six. You know.
That leaves us some wiggle room at least.
I feel like we've had a couple of good years and I think. I don't think anything really. Has changed much with our dynamic in the county. So. Think six is probably safe. I always do ten just because that's what they advise us to do, but.
Can you, what is, is it Jess? What is? What's our advisor's name?
Rachel.
Rachel.
Yep.
Can you talk to her?
She's gonna give him a, give her a call.
I will do that.
This week, you can send us an email. Get any actionable information, Peter.
And that's something to think about too. That's not, not necessarily figured into this. We didn't have that increase for twenty twenty-three. So at the end of the year, we're gonna see some of that that's unspent. Because when I'm figuring these budgets, I'm figuring that all the revenue is gonna come in, we're gonna spend the whole budget. We never spend the whole budget. So it's always a little bit better than what it looks.
Well, plus we always, we always have to put in the. Is it five percent?
Yes.
That's just fluff.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a required. I think you've got four point eight mil, or four hundred eighty-eight thousand for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that's that.
Cushion.
That's that red line on the last page of the budget sheet where they, um, say less five percent.
But what was it last year?
Thing.
What do we have for twenty twenty-three?
Look at that. Our last year's budget. It was. Four hundred and seventy thousand.
Thought it's gonna be about a wash. Cause I don't think we've ever dipped into that.
No, we never have.
So that helps. Yeah. Andy, are you, cause you're not part of the meeting this afternoon, right? Are you?
Yeah.
Okay. Is Lane also? Just so they're here for those.
Yep.
Yep, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be there this afternoon, um, and not the. Google is anything. To necessarily be a hundred percent trusted, but. Let's say in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three went up an average of four percent and right now. Health insurance is looking like a two point three percent increase.
Yeah, buddy was finding too.
Yep.
That would be nice.
Would be pretty safe at six percent estimate then.
That would be nice. That would amount to quite a bit.
We don't wanna be off, uh, in the other direction very much.
No, and I like to be conservative, so.
That's what I mean.
All right. Anything else? Everybody had a chance to see vouchers.
Yeah.
No.
There a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
His bills, second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the vouchers. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Anything on Clay County Park?
Yes.
And I, I would have loved to have this one at a different meeting, so, uh, but unfortunately, just like with the timing of. The budget process, you know, uh, there's, there's deadlines that we've got to work around, so. The, the, the main thing, and this meeting's run pretty long, so I, I don't wanna take too much time on it, but. Uh, the, the main thing that I've discovered since the last meeting, um, I did go to the farm, uh, farm service office. To go get descriptions of the plots of land that we're gonna put out for bids. And, uh. Those, uh, those legal descriptions that they were able to provide. I don't think are appropriate for us to put out to bid. I think that, um, so I, uh. I guess I, I didn't follow up. I'd asked them to, to, si- si- send me an email. I was gonna try to share with you. I apologize. That's not in the packet, but. You know, one, to, one, one example would be that, uh, they have a plot that is, uh. That is outlined on the map and, and it includes the county shop and the rodeo grounds. So if we were to put that parcel out for bid, I, I am concerned that, uh, we would inadvertently be leasing our county shop. To whoever the farmer was that, um, that won the bid on the farm ground. Uh, so, so I think that we don't have. We don't have appropriate legal descriptions to, uh, to, to put into the, uh. Uh, to put into the, the, the contract for the, uh, for the farm ground, for whoever wins it. Um, so I, I'm afraid that we may need a survey before we can do that process.
Ouch.
Possible, Mike, to put up a lease of tillable acres?
We talked about that a little bit, Jeffrey and I had a, had a conversation after he. Located one brown article descriptions. But I'm not gonna say it's impossible. I, 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 I haven't reviewed everything yet. Jeffrey has quite a bit of. So Jeffrey and I spoke last week and I saw a little bit of the, uh, what he has. I think there's a lot that we need to get gone through. He currently has it. I can at some point do it. As soon as, uh, it's accessible to me, I can take a look. There's, I, I, I share some of the same concern, the, at least based off of the initial information that, that he received and that I looked at. It looks incomplete.
I'm gonna get that microphone a little closer, make it easier for people to hear you.
Incomplete, I guess would be my concern as far as what the legal descriptions that are, that are noted on the information we have right now. Don't appear to actually correspond with how. The rodeo grounds and the farmland and the, and the county shop are all actually situated. So I, I would say maybe. I don't have an answer. I'd have to look at that and see what contractually we're able to make something in the county and feel safe. Utilizing a contract that's talking about tillable ground. The bigger concern, I, at least for as I, the initial, uh, review was that. The legals just appeared incomplete. And so I, we may have an issue where we, if things have been being kind of cut up and divvied up. Uh, over the last, you know, several decades, we're not really having a great legal understanding as far as legal description of what that property is that's out there. So I, I'd say at this point, I probably need to review all of the documents that are being collected by Jeffrey at this point before I can give a real answer to that.
So Jeffrey, did they give you the FSA maps?
They did, yep.
So on there, it'll show, it'll show farm number and tillable acres?
Right.
So you, you don't rent it out as legal description. You, you say in this section, this many tillable acres? You know, plus or minus FSA.
Sure.
So that would be, that would be potentially adequate. I mean, as.
Yes.
As not a farmer, somebody who's never rented farm ground, I wasn't, uh, I wasn't clear on what the, what was common with that, so.
So like, like when the city does it, they don't rent out the cell tower or the power line towers that go through that farm ground. It's, it's tillable acres based off FSA. Uh, surveyed or however they, whatever acres they wanna use, cause that's what they're gonna have to certify by, is those acres.
So if that's, if that's, uh, if that's acceptable, then I think that's wonderful. I would like to avoid. Uh, I'd like to avoid any surveys at this time. Um, I just thinking of expense, I mean. Looking maybe a few years down the road when the jails finished, it's easier to, to, to put a little money into things. I did think that, you know, one, one takeaway I had was that, um, there's, we, we don't have, uh, consistency between what's in Beacon. Um, what's in the USDA, uh, database. You know, in terms of, uh, what, what's in the, the countywide directory, looking at my plat map. We've got things listed as owned by Clay County Park Association. Uh, that aren't, uh, and, uh, we've got. Yeah, yeah, things, part of the county shop is listed as, uh, you know, owned by, I think that the county shops listed is owned by the. Clay County. And then, uh, Co- Clay County Commission. And then I think, uh, I think that, uh, a lot of the rest of the properties listed is owned by. Clay County Park Association. I went up to the registered D's office and it did, it did seem up there that the most recent thing they had on record. Had the, uh, the whole parcel that I understand to be owned by the county, to be owned by the county. So I, I think that there's some clarity there, but. I did wonder if, um, in the interest of, uh. Clarity, uh, and, uh, in, in the future, if that's something that we'd wanna be considered, but if there's, if there's a way we can avoid that. Um, at this stage of the process, then I, I, I think that's wonderful and, uh, and we'll just proceed with that.
I, I think the tillable acres on the FSA maps would be the appropriate air photos to use. And, uh, like. Travis said there should be a farm number associated with those. And those.
I believe there's three.
Pretty darn accurate. They should be down to within a few hundreds of an acre in accuracy.
Yeah, I think that's what I saw.
It's, it's what they're gonna make you certified by, so.
Right, right. And those are pretty accurate. Uh, numbers that are done by analysis of the air fo- or air photography.
Now, whoever rents it's gonna argue if there's less acres. They're never gonna say anything if it comes out more, because with the GPS we've got. The acres don't always line up, but it's just as easy to say this is what FSA has.
Yeah, they're gonna be accurate to within.
They'll be close enough.
Yeah, close enough. I mean, it's gonna, you know, they're, they, they print out in hundreds of an acre, but they're gonna be. Easily within an acre or so, I think, which will be. Close enough for our purposes and it should be close enough for the renter.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense with me. Perhaps then when we're able to, we can have Travis and Dick, if you both have experience with this. Take a look at it to ensure that you don't see anything that appears completely out of norms. As I looked at it, it, it looked out of norms to me, but I'm, I'm not viewing it from a, a farm rental perspective.
So Jeffrey is the easiest thing. Are you here for the next meeting in person?
So I, I will be back in town, uh, so president in person for the next meeting, the next scheduled meeting. That, not for Friday's meeting, uh.
Right. But the twenty fifth or whatever.
But the twenty fifth, yep.
Or whatever that day is.
Yeah.
It's gonna be easier for, we have it in front of us.
Yeah.
In case anybody has any questions. Cause you don't have to do anything. The only thing you have to do by September first is notify the current landlord or current renter.
Got.
I mean, this thing doesn't have to be rented till the first of April.
Okay, but, but I would, uh, so I, my expectation was that if someone is leasing this for next year. They're gonna wanna know that by September possibly, so that they have time in the.
Cause they're not gonna, they're not gonna get access to this property until March first.
Right. Okay, all right.
Even though you give, even though you give notice to the current tenant by September first, they have possession until March first.
Okay, all right. That's good to know. Thank you. All right.
So Travis, is there anything that they would do differently, um, uh, in the fall? If they knew they were gonna have the land versus weren't sure?
They won't have access to it. That's the problem. I mean, they, if they could. There's things that they would probably wanna do, but they're not gonna be able to. And everybody understands that. The current lease is already in place. Yeah. So you can't change that. So this, whoever's the tenant is right now, they have until March first to do whatever they want with it.
The kind of land and the kind of cropping they're likely to do, there wouldn't be much in the way of fall tillage, I think, anyway.
Okay.
Couldn't tell you. You know, and if they, if the current tenant wasn't the one who got it back. Whoever rented it could talk to them. They can work whatever out, but.
Okay.
They just have to go on with knowing that they don't have access till March first.
So do we need to send them that letter? Or does the, um, association board need to send them that letter? Cause I, I, I mean, it, it's been very loosey-goosey how all of this works. You know, this, th- these are systems that were established in the sixties and the seventies and.
Well, we're the owner. Of course, we've sublet it, correct? Or how?
We are, we, we lease it by the month to the park association.
And lease the parks. I don't think we lease the land to them, do we?
Well, that.
We don't know.
Yeah, my, my, my current understanding is, is, is actually leaning more towards that we have leased the. Uh, all of the land to the Clay County Park Association. And then the Clay County Park Association has a somewhat informal sublet agreement with the renters. And that that's kind of the justification for why the checks flowed directly into the Clay County Park Association's coffers. Um, there, I haven't made it through. I have a, a large, uh, folder, uh, well, ten folders. Full of, uh, paper copies of things that haven't been scanned. Documenting, uh, agreements and things over the years. And at least some of those clearly, at, at some point at least. They clearly said that the land was, uh, was all leased to the Clay County Park Association and then sublet to. Uh, to farmers. So that I remember reading at least, at, at least one document that said that this includes the farm ground. Out there in the lease to the Clay County Park Association, but that's been superseded by, you know, more things going forward. And I, I did manage to get up to current time before I left, left for my trip, so, um, I think that. I think that Travis's understanding of, uh, of things is the way that it should be. I think that the Clay County, Clay County, uh, the county should own. Uh, does own the entire property and should. Uh does own the entire property and should be leasing specific parts of it to specific entities. Uh directly, you know, um I I I think that 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 makes more sense. And I think that um from a from a. A revenue and expenses point of view for the county, I think that that um is the most appropriate with state law. From what I've what I've gathered from talking to Michael about state law too, so. And then we would have a separate.
Yeah.
But I think uh the current situation is is that the current lease that needs to be terminated. Um, is held between the Parks Association and the current renter.
Mm hmm.
So that letter probably, in my opinion, and I'm I'm not a lawyer. Would be uh that uh the Parks Association should be the one that terminates. Uh sends the letter of termination to that uh landowner or that land leaser.
I believe that makes sense. I believe probably also equally makes sense for the county to then send the park board something as well.
Okay.
Keeping a flow, just keeping everything in check. Because if the lease is going from the park board to the individual farmers. Then there is a contract that exists between those two parties that I agree that we probably don't want to. I don't know. We don't really have the authority. We're not a party to the contract, even though we're the owner of the land.
Correct.
Our if that is the, you know, we need to determine what the actual. Con contractual relationships are between all of these parties. But if that is the situation, the appropriate uh thing for the county to do will be to notify. Uh, the Clay County uh Park Board and then the Park Board then would have whatever requirements they see fit.
So is it easier to just change the contract that we have with the park board? To just put an addendum in there that we allow them to sublet the farmland out? And then we don't have to do anything.
You know, the the advantage actually of doing that is um that the. You know, the plans that the Park Association has, you know, after the strategic planning session. Um, that they did um is is to take at least some of that money. I mean, they're stabilizing in terms of rent. Um, you know, uh for the farm and um, you know, rental for of camping spaces. So so I think what's ultimately gonna happen is that the campground is gonna pay for itself. Um, and so some of that park money, uh some of the rent money can then be used. Uh for trail maintenance, um for further development of the park and so on. And they can have a long-term capital account that they can put money into every year. Um, because they were operating under five oh one C three rules. Um, it it's much harder for us to do that. If we want to be the middle person, then what we're doing is we're taking in all the rent money. And then we're sending them a check, which is an extra, an extra step. It might be, I think you're right, Travis. It might be cleaner.
Um, it's easier for us.
Yeah, it might be cleaner just for us to amend the lease um and allow the park board to bid it out. Uh, we have a very different park board than we had five years ago. Um, and I I think they are fully capable of of managing that. They've got good financial systems in place, I think.
I haven't reviewed uh state law from kind of that scope or that lens, uh just running an addendum. So I can go back and look at that. My one concern though is since it's there are some specific statutes that speak directly to. Ownership, but well, when the county owns property, what the requirements are, there's also specific statutes that talk about. Essentially gifting property to five oh one C threes, uh and then that would, you know, ultimately. Remove the county ownership and remove any liability to those other statutes. So I'd have to go back and look like. My gut tells me that statutes may prohibit that, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't think we'd wanna I don't think we'd wanna gift. I I I think what we would wanna do is a lease of all the land. Jeffrey?
Yeah, I I recall um uh for the the so so there were two statutes when we sat down, uh Michael, you and Samantha and I. And uh and the there was uh the statute, so there's a statute that would govern. How the county would uh lease the profit, uh lease property to a not nonprofit entity. Um, and then there was this separate statute about gifting or leasing uh to a nonprofit entity. And it 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 did sound under that that the that you could lease it to the nonprofit entity. The nonprofit entity would then need to be operating under and and they are at official five one C three, so they need to make sure that they are. You know, not personally benefiting from it and things like that. But I do think that it based on the that discussion and that ordinance. Uh that statute when we were looking at it, it did sound like the county uh the, I'm sorry, the Clay County Park Association. Um, could sub sublet that. So they they could be utilizing that as long as they're utilizing it towards. Um, towards an appropriate nonprofit purpose, they could be utilizing it however they they saw fit. So I think that it 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 did sound to me, I mean, I I think you should definitely, um, you know. As our state's attorney, you should definitely confirm that. But I I I was, that that did seem to be possible. Yep.
And I and I'll take a look at that. I just hadn't viewed it from that lens. I know that there are certain requirements without giving a a legal uh. Opinion right now, I'd have to go back and look at it to really make sure that 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 seems right.
But whatever the statues are. Is two weeks enough time to?
Two weeks is fine.
Because you should probably have that.
As long as it's straightforward. I mean, if I'm running into issues that appear very gray and we may, I I can let you know about that at that time. But as so long as it appears that things are moving in a in a black and white situation, absolutely, then two weeks I'd get that deal.
So you should probably review the current contract that we have with the park board also then.
Absolutely. Yeah, because that's really what it's gonna come down to is what the lease is currently, who it is. We've there's been different discussions as we've gone through this as to whether or not the county is leasing property to farmers. On a handshake deal or if the park board is and I know we.
It's been the park board. It's been the park board that's doing the leasing, because then the the renter writes the check directly to the park board.
Right. And the discussions between the renter is always been with the parks board, not with this group.
And you know, the so I think hopefully with the package that Jeffrey has, we can have some validation to all of that.
Yeah.
Um, rather than assumptions. I mean, I I think it's fair to assume at this point that that is the relationship. Hopefully, there's something in there that will confirm it. And if that's the case, then we can move forward confidently. I think even without it. Appears that everything is moving in that direction regardless.
Yeah, the the lease probably needs a second look. Um, we changed as part of it um a cou- couple of years ago, I think. To make it a a month to month lease, um because there were a lot of issues.
Um, well, it only we just have to give. It's an ongoing lease, but we only have to give them thirty days notice.
Right.
And that's it's always been.
Yep. Yep.
Absolutely. Yeah, so let me review that. Um, and then once I'm confident in the relationships that exist out there between. The land that we're discussing specifically, I can give a lot more concrete opinion as to how we can move forward. If the under the the way that you're talking about, it makes a lot of sense, at least for simplicity.
Um, so what so then uh to to clo- close this out, I I was going to share with you all that I I. Uh, I believe that the current uh tenant has been notified verbally. Um, but I will uh so the the Clay County Park Association's next meeting is on the nineteenth next week. I'm going to attempt to attend that. Uh by Zoom. Um, and so I I will let them know that they should proceed with uh. Uh notifying the tenant in writing so that we're sure that that's occurred. Um, and then the Clay County Park Association has been notified of our last discussion. Uh as a commission of this issue. So I I wrote wrote a summary for them, which I will, uh I'll email it to Carrie. So she can just send it around to everybody. So everybody can see what what their current understanding is of this discussion. Um, and then I also, you know, sent them timestamps for where the discussion we had was in our um in our meeting on YouTube. So they so they saw that. This is a different direction from that. So I just wanted to make sure that um before we close this discussion out that. That the commission's uh current plan is I I should go uh to the Clay County Park Association and tell them that actually. Um, we are, we are thinking that we'd like the the Clay County Park Association to handle the subletting. To 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 conduct this as a sublease and uh and and take take the ball from there. And I I think we can. We can have a final discussion of that on the on the twenty fifth or a subsequent discussion on the twenty fifth. But I just want to make sure that I'm communicating the right thing back to Clay County Park Association. Does that sound correct, everybody?
Yep. And then if 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 we can get um that uh lease revised, maybe between the two of you. Um, then we we can approve any revisions um that, you know, for 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 clarity.
Yeah. Granting authority in that in the in the lease. Um, so I mean, I and it could be that this could be in our our next lease at the beginning of the year, I suppose. Or um, uh, yeah, but but that we would add add the authority for uh uh the the stated authority for the Clay County Park Association. To sublet some of the property for the for the benefit of the Clay County Park Association. That correct? Good.
Sounds good.
Make sure the notification gets sent certified mail too, Jeffrey.
Okay, I will do that.
Have a copy of them receiving it.
I will do that.
What was the next? Oh, and it's gonna be up to the park board, but I'd still wonder if after we get all done with everything else. If we could make, you know, if we could somehow make sure a Clay County resident ends up renting it.
Okay, yeah, you mentioned that at the last one. I like that. Yep. And that that could be something that's easier for a the Clay County Park Association to manage as well. Um, I I I could. I think we had some discussion at the last meeting that was public notice and things. It it could be that we would just have to put it out for everybody. Uh, but the Clay County Park Association might have a little bit more uh leeway there to to make that uh requirement. So I like that one. Alright, I I think that's it for me on this one.
Thank you. Um, it's good to see it all going in positive directions. Um, August meeting dates.
Okay, so August is another five Tuesday month. Um, I am gonna be gone from the seventh to the eleventh. And so I would like to propose that we move. The meeting to the fifteenth, if that's okay, to kind of uh for one, spread out the meetings through the month. But also um just to relieve that since I will be gone.
Yeah, and I can't make it on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Um, because we had talked earlier and um. Yeah, quite quite a while ago. And um I I can't be there on the fifteenth.
And Lane has safety meetings in here on the fifteenth.
Okay.
What about the? What about the twenty second? Um, the so so the eighth, uh I may be able to zoom into a meeting, but I would be traveling. From the the sixth through the eleventh, so if um.
Well, is there a different day that week of the fifteenth that works better or?
No.
Okay.
That um, yeah, I I kind of went by our schedule and made 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 plans.
But if you even if you're gone, Nicole can.
Yeah.
Dan, it's.
Well, that's the thing. She may have a scheduling conflict that day too. Um, not that Jess couldn't take minutes, but then the office would just have to be closed. Um.
If you guys need the room on the fifteenth, I can adjust my schedules too. Uh, of August.
Um.
I would say. That is also the August, telling the trial stack weeks, so there's a decent chance that.
And I've got jury duty that week.
Alright then.
Alright.
I've got jury duty for six months, but I know.
Twenty second and twenty nine.
Or budget, will our budget work be able to proceed correctly?
Yes, yes. Um, we have to adopt a provisional budget by July, the the last meeting in July. And then the final budget does not get adopted until the last meeting in September. So. Um, we can go ahead and have the meeting on the eighth and Jessica take the minutes. She'll just need to close the door to the office and and put a sign up while she's down here. So. If that works.
Sounds like there's fewer conflicts that way.
It does.
Alright.
It sure does.
Okay, any building project updates?
No, have you heard anything, Andy? We're supposed to have a meeting, but.
We have a meeting on Friday.
This Friday?
Owners meeting Friday.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if I've got an invite here.
I haven't gotten anything yet.
Okay.
So no, I guess we don't.
I've got eight thirty on Friday. We had a meeting yesterday just to discuss the kitchen plan, kitchen layout, things like that with. Kitchen people, but owners meetings Friday.
Okay.
I do have um a little bit of an update question, whatever you wanna call it. Um, regarding the bond money, it's currently with South Dakota Feds. Um. Colliers can't advise us where to put it to have it invested in the meantime?
So before you go any farther, can we go into executive session on that? To decide, you know, just the discussion. I I don't want it to be public. Because I I I think I mentioned last time that I wanted to be in person to explain to you. How the money should work or what we should do.
Okay.
So we move into executive session for contractual purposes.
Are we through the rest of the agenda?
I think so.
Yeah, no joint jurisdiction discussion. Okay.
If we aren't going to come back into the normal session, I just wanted to at least having a meeting on Friday. I haven't been here to see special meetings. I know there's no requirements. Have we done this before? Any concern about?
Twenty four hours.
Twenty four hours. That's what I'm seeing in.
Yep.
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 When on Friday you're gonna have that? We do have that owners meeting of the building.
Who about the meeting?
I don't know if you need to be in it or not.
Yeah, I'd better be there. Nick was wondering if I could be there. He just didn't tell me when it was gonna be yet. Um.
So Friday afternoon?
Friday afternoon.
What works for everybody else?
Friday afternoon stuff for me, but I'll make it work.
Do you know what time?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
And Friday is the opt out deadline, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
So if we do it at ten in the morning?
Okay.
Hour and a half over there should be plenty of time for me.
Thursday afternoon too quick.
Probably.
Good.
I mean, if we want the department heads to take a look at their budgets tomorrow, and then if I have Thursday to put things together. Yeah.
Are are we saying are we saying ten AM uh ten AM central time for the meeting to uh complete the opt out discussion on Friday?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure I got that right. That that should work okay for me, I think.
And I could probably zoom in.
But as long as there's three of us here, you know, as long as you got, if you were to have to just email your thoughts.
Hmm.
Or whatever, you know, however, I don't wanna do it without you, but.
Yeah, yeah, it just it just depends on how things go.
Usually the budgets, we've always made sure all five were here or available, but.
So we have to sign, we have to sign the opt out right away, don't we?
On Friday? Well, it has to be passed and.
Yeah.
And it has to be advertised, so I just have to get it to the newspaper right away.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything to sign.
There is a resolution, but. I think.
I think in the past, we individually signed that.
Was this? Okay.
Have to be done.
I think that resolution from a very quick review required two thirds.
Yes, it requires two thirds and all and everybody has to sign.
Well. Everybody that was available.
Exactly, exactly. Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That works. Alright, so is there a motion to go into it?
Uh, move to go into executive session for contractual. Okay.
The motion and this.
It's bond, yeah.
It's uh, yeah, so there's a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we're in executive session.
Hey, let me get this.
Thanks, Andy. Is there a motion to close executive session?
Move to come out of executive session.
It's motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Uh.
A opposed, motion carries. Um, is there any further business?
Yes, right. And it's posted.
Um, I didn't know all of you were coming. I thought because. Jeffrey, are you, were you planning on logging in this afternoon? And I thought that there was somebody else that wasn't gonna be available.
I I didn't uh, that that's not on my agenda currently. Nope.
Okay. I was thinking there was somebody else that couldn't. And so I thought we were gonna have.
Two.
Well, if it's not posted, that's all we can have.
I cannot come.
So.
Who's gonna come?
Travis, you'll be.
I'll be here.
And and I have it on mine.
I am, I'm stupid. I, you know.
Yeah, if if only two can come.
You'll be more helpful than me, so.
Yep, I'm. Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm willing just because of.
Yeah, you're.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to pack. It's just two followers this afternoon.
Well, I would step away because you two are gonna be in charge of it, but if you're trying to pack, Betty, I, as long as Dick's here. Cause you two have been the leads on, on this project.
I get it here. If you, uh, you don't have to drive all the way.
Oh, I wasn't going home anyway.
Okay.
Cause it's only what, three hours? Yeah, I'm not going home.
Yeah.
So we're not opposed.
Okay, alright then.
Move to adjourn.
So ten o'clock Friday morning again?
Yep, yep. And I'll be, I'll be on Zoom. Um, so there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, oh, I'm.
Uh, motion and a second. Um, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned and thank you.